Agenda?
Good evening Chair White, Dr. Thomas, members of the board. I'm going to talk a little bit about academic excellence in action and kind of the steps that we have been taking towards implementing that component of our strategic plan. You just heard a lot about curricular resources. That is a lot more at the ground level. We're kind of going up a level and talking more high level what we're working on in terms of our academic excellence area. And then Dr. Anderson will pipe in as he sees fit. So as we all know at this point, academic excellence is a key part of our strategic plan and it's the area that has risen to the top as the priority across all of our different departments and schools. Last year, we aligned all of our school improvement plans and department plans to that academic excellence pillar of the strategic plan. This year is very similar. The added component is just deepening and making sure that those goals are continuing to push in the direction that we want them to go. Last year was a pretty quick turnaround time between the adoption of the strategic plan and the formation of those plans. So this year, we have a little bit more time to dig deeper and push to kind of that next level of implementation for those department and school plans. When we think about goals, we cascade from our strategic priorities. And in the process, we're kind of at the point where we're really honing in on school goals and PLC goals. We call them learning teams. That is really the opportunity for educators or leaders or groups of individuals to come together and do that collective learning and capacity building. We have very limited number of professional development days. That's not super unique to us. It's just difficult to provide professional development for staff within our contract and schedule. So a lot of the capacity building and learning that's done is in that team level. And so it would, it might look like a department at the high school. It might look like a grade level at a school. But that's an opportunities for teachers to come together or principals to come together and really look at data, figure out what's working, improve their practice, figure out kind of the next steps in what they need to do. We're really focusing on that team level this year to make sure that those are functioning at the highest quality that we can get to in order to really build the capacity of our entire system. As I was just thinking a lot about these other presentations, continuous improvement and goals and getting better is a never-ending, it just never ends. So regardless of where we are, we always need to continue to get better. So this is just an embedded way for us to do that. And then we are tightening the relationship between builds, which is our building instructional leadership teams and our learning teams to make sure that there's a really clear connection between that leadership team at the school and the teaming that happens with teachers. As we talked about last time, our results are not where we want them to be. So we're trying to figure out in a strategic fashion how we get to the next step of improving those results. If we look at our curricular implementation area for bridges, we know that we are currently in year three of implementation. That's when we would expect to see those outcomes. We are seeing if we break down the grade levels that have been implementing our curricular resource, we are already seeing some improvement in that fourth grade across the district. And so that's one area that we want to focus in on what is going well in that grade level. And there also might be teams of teachers within other grade levels or individual teachers that are really those exemplars and that are getting those results. And so part of the work is to really understand the areas in which things are working and to leverage that across the whole system. I'm sure we've seen this a lot of different times. I think our arrow, we're probably somewhere in the middle range. We're really trying to get that, all the arrows going in the right direction. We have some of them going in the right direction, so it's a matter of figuring out why and replicating that and making sure that we have those practices across. I know we've received some questions about implementation and why is it not happening to the full extent or why does it take three years? That's really, it's, implementation of a curricular resource is not a light switch. So we would love it to be, as soon as we have a new resource, we're able to just hit the ground running and do all the different components. But the learning that students are doing is very complicated and the, the way that resources are designed are also complicated. And within our bridges resources, there's a lot of different components to implementation. I know it is desirable to have it all show results immediately, but that's just not the way that it works. We have some teachers that are having a lot of success in areas, so figuring out what supports or what things that they had that enabled them to get to that place. And then how do we spread that learning across the district to make sure that we're really all moving in that same direction? In terms of our district academic plan, these are really built out of the findings that we had at the end of the year. We analyzed all of the school improvement plans and what the focus area was for each of the schools moving forward to next year. Our priority one, which I spoke to a little bit, is that building educator capacity. It's something that always needs to be built and specifically this year, it's through that aligned professional learning. So really focusing on those opportunities that we have for job embedded learning, which happens again at that team level. As we talk about tier one instruction, we really have to always continue to improve that. The stronger we have in tier one, the less we have referred to other areas, including special education. So the extent to which we have a really high quality tier one and that we're able to give students challenge opportunities and then also support within that tier one instruction, that is going to be the most efficient model, that's going to be the most effective model. So continuing to do that. Obviously, in math, we're in a little bit different of a place in elementary at least than literacy in terms of our ability to do that at scale. And then as a system, really using data to drive instruction and interventions. Our learning teams do use data to drive their conversations. We could always do a better job of doing that in different teams and identifying again which teams are doing that really effectively and how do we take those practices and put them into place elsewhere? I know we've also gotten some questions over time about the strategic plan. The strategic plan isn't a plan, it's a vision. And so when we talk about what it looks like in operation, this is some more concrete things that are happening this year within each of the areas within our strategic plan. Obviously, the four pillars across, we did an exercise with our learning leaders, which is all the department and school leaders, to talk about specifically in their department and school plans, what are they doing in each of these areas? And this is a high level compilation of all of the things that got pulled from those plans. In terms of core instruction, it's really, each of the elementary schools is working on implementing some practice that they learned from OLA. It's a little bit difficult because they won't have that resource, but they, there are things that they can do to bridge that gap until we have those in place. So each of the elementary schools is figuring out a concrete way to implement some of the practices that they learned in their OLA training. And then really ensuring that fidelity to implementation and bridges and looking to make sure that we're aligned with pacing and using data to drive instruction. In terms of instructional excellence, we're really, over the past couple of years, we've been focusing on the Danielson framework. That's a very nationally known rubric to identify the key areas of high quality instruction. We're continuing to implement that and really figure out how to help teachers improve in the areas of instruction. And that happens through peer coaches and principals as the building instructional leader. And then really taking our learning teams to the next level, not to get down into the weeds there, but kind of transferring it from more of a functional team to, we found that throughout the system, we have a lot of focus on logistics and that's the nature of the work a lot of times. But how do we embed structures to ensure that we're having important conversations about the, the content that, that we need to focus on? It's really easy to get distracted by operational things and fires that happen in, in schools and, and classrooms. So how do we provide structured space so that we can continue building our capacity? And that's from top to bottom. And then a lot of our departments are really here to, to provide that academic infrastructure that we need to keep things moving. I won't go through the other ones, but just wanted to share a little bit about some concrete steps that we're taking to operationalize the strategic plan. An update on our scorecard process. This is the most updated visual of what our district scorecard is going to look like. I know I provided one last spring. It's not drastically different. There are some things that have been changed. One of the things is I've just entered, if there is some missing information, just clarity about when that information is going to be coming to you. So for the science MCAs, that transferred from MCA three to MCA four, those are currently embargoed. So I wanted to be clear that you'll be receiving that information in October along with the report that we get for ACT compared to state averages. That's in October. Our graduation rates come out in the following May. So just to give you a cadence of if there is a missing component, when would you expect to see that come? Within optimized resources, we have our staff that really is our key resource, our most important resource. So how do we continue to track metrics around our, our staff? And really, our goal has been to complete the Danielson feedback for teachers. The, the observation component is helpful, but the key part of that is the debrief and the coaching that happens after. So now that we're kind of back to normed in, in terms of making sure that it's happening, the next step is to continue to improve that coaching conversation afterwards. Positive learning environments, this has a lot to do with some of our STUDER survey items. I'll show you some of the STUDER survey items overall and the direction we're headed with data visualization for that. But these are really pulled from the key areas that the schools have been working on. And then attendance is something that currently have as a consistent attendance rate that's reported through MDE, but I'm in the process of developing more specific ongoing attendance information for you all to look at on a regular basis. It's going to be a little bit challenging to get up to speed with that because some of our attendance codes have gotten revised and consolidated. So I'll just ask that you be patient as we roll out this attendance reporting. Similar thing with behavior, the way that we track it, we had a lot of legacy codes that have been cleaned up. So we might not have perfect comparisons year to year, but hopefully this will be cleaned up moving forward. And then our community partnerships, these are the key metrics there. We will be posting all of the STUDER survey results on the website. So this is just an example of what those look like. These are the items from the employees, the students and the parents, and then full charts of each of the items and then what the results were for each of the three years we've done that survey. And then we'll continue to report that longitudinally moving forward. And then finally, an example of, I know we've had some questions about what metrics might look like at the school level. We've also talked about how we need to be very careful with that because there's a lot of reasons why a school metric might look the way that it does. So what we don't want to do is be pitting schools against each other, especially in a time of site consolidation. But I wanted to, to show a little bit about what it could look like at the site level. This is an example of a, some components of a school improvement plan that was used as an exemplar in our learning leaders meeting. So as an example, this school has a math goal of increasing their, the percentage of students who meet or exceeds on the MCA from 2025 to 2026. That is consistent across all elementary schools because we are in that year three of implementation. So what that might look like externally is reporting those MCA scores by building and what their baseline was and what their outcome was this year. In terms of internal metrics, we'll be monitoring FastBridge. We're going to be looking, again, doing an implementation study to make sure that we're continuing to move to that next level of implementation for bridges and then just utilizing our continuous improvement feedback cycles. So just what you can expect from the external, more the internal metrics, we can report on the things that we learned from those processes and some of the adjustments we're making. In terms of optimizing resources, this has to do with advancing and their qualifiers and their Danielson framework. This is something that does not get reported externally because that's personnel data. So that's something that we hold, but we again can talk about areas that we see trends or we can look at it at an aggregate level and report what we're seeing and what we're doing in terms of the continuous improvement process there. For the positive learning environments, this school has a goal about wanting to go to school every day. All of the school improvement processes had a root cause analysis or a needs assessment to figure out what was it that really would be the highest impact strategy to focus on? So that was this one and you'll see that external metric in that STUDER survey data. We've asked to have inter, or check-in points. So they will actually be doing an internal survey with their stakeholders of this item to get a mid-year benchmark to see whether they're making any progress in this area. And then in community partnerships, this one has to do with the STUDER survey item of receiving positive phone calls, emails and messages. And again, you'll see that at the end of the year through that STUDER survey data. And then similarly, they will be doing a mid-year survey internally. The school would be disseminating that to figure out whether they're making progress in that area and if not, what are the things they can do to, to make improvements in that area? So that's all I have for you tonight. Are there any questions?
Just have a couple of thoughts and questions. So, you know, having students in the district, I think there's a wide range of expectations set for our students at times, so from teachers. So is there anything as far as alignment, whether in these plans or elsewhere, like for example, planners? Some teachers use them, some teachers don't. Some say read 20 minutes, the parent has to sign it and send it back every night. Some, I've never seen them use it in two years. So like, is there, you know, I, I always think of this, like, you know, as a parent, if I invested probably half of what we invest in academics is me doing sports and everything else, we could be doing a lot more. And I think it's, I would prefer to sign the planner because I'm not the one nagging that as a parent. Like is there, are there things we can be doing to standardize expectations, not only for parents, but for students across our buildings that you've seen collectively?
It's interesting you brought the planner one because that actually is the main direction that the middle school is going in terms of their planning, their school improvement process this year. One of the main things that happened, Dr. Anderson is a middle school principal, so you can probably speak to this better, but middle school is really the age where students learn how to manage their time, how to manage deadlines, how to pace themselves, how to study, how to take notes. It's a very important developmental time where they're, I'm really having to take ownership over their learning. And that's been the conversation at the middle school. Last year, we had the big challenge of kind of combining the both of them. And Principal Kabushak had some work to align experiences across sides of the street to make sure that was kind of evened out. And now the focus really is on what are some of those things we can do to help students get to the next level in terms of their academic progress? They have purchased paper plant, like actual hard copy planners for every student and that is the expectation, all the classes that they are using that. So I think that is an example where that was identified as something that was an important component of learning in middle school and really students need to set goals and that's really the key to success in middle school. So that is something that is standardized. I think the, the ideal would be yes, that they would all be exactly the same. I think the coordination, you know, it, this was something that was prioritized for that coordination. I think that in certain situations, like if we have a new curricular resource implementation, we use that as an opportunity to be as consistent as possible across experiences in areas where there may be some legacy, you know, teachers maybe have written their own curriculum. You may get a little bit more inconsistencies, but I think that is always the goal is to make sure that if a student were to get picked up and put in another school or put in another class, that they would have a continue, like a continuum of experience that wouldn't be disrupted or expectations wouldn't drastically change.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, and that's kind of where, where my mind went was just like, what else can we be doing? This doesn't feel like enough while we wait for three years for curriculum to be implemented. What can we be doing as parents for our community, as a community? Have, have there been any other kind of big bold ideas raised? You know, do we try to, you know, take a cohort and take away the iPads? Do we try, I don't know, like I'm looking for, you know, ideas in that. And like even the planners, like you said, I have two middle schoolers, they don't use them at least the first 12 days. So I don't, I don't know, like where is that inconsistency, right? I, I just, I really struggle and I feel like I can't rely on it as a parent and then I go on to, you know, the apps to check it just because I'm not sure if it's there. So where, you know, how can we help as like a board and policy or like what else can we be doing?
Yeah, I would just say that the technology has shifted this year. So we have eliminated some of the technology at that younger grade level. So we're going to see what impact that that has had or that that may have on, on our students. I would also say that last year, we introduced the concept of the Laker Lighthouse. And this year, we have more expectations for the completion of that so that we can begin to highlight the promising practices and the expectations that there's requirements for schools to submit into that Laker Lighthouse on those practices. So we begin to stand, you know, one uplift that, but also begin to standardize that across the district. So that's another tool that we have made now mandatory after its introduction last year. So, but there's a lot of different practices that are happening, you know, at the granular level within classrooms. And I think that's how we're going to try to sift through that, you know, outside of our big investments on building capacity and strengthening that tier one instruction. I can't stress enough that our ability to have that foundational learning really strong for our students is absolutely critical. You know, we talked last, last couple of weeks ago about some of our walkthroughs and I think I mentioned one of my goals going with some of this intentional rounding to understand how are we actually operationalizing these plans and what would I be looking for in the classroom to see changes in practice? You know, whether it's the, the resources that we mentioned earlier, it's the fidelity and usage of said resources. And that's another thing that is a big focus for us so that we have that consistent implementation. If, if you're, you know, gung ho and all into it and I'm a bit more reserved or I, you know, always had this lesson that I've designed or this, this set of lessons and I still want to bring those in and it's hard for me to separate from those and just kind of being real here, those are the kind of expectation level sets that we're going to have to start standardizing. It's not to say that some of those lessons aren't good, but we can't do everything and we have to find our highest leverage impacts. And that's what we have shared in terms of our big academic priorities for the year and how we aligned a lot of our plans to fit within those priorities so that in our monitoring sessions, rounding sessions, walkthroughs, et cetera, even some of the work that you might do coming into the building, looking for some of those leverage points that we've mentioned as well. So, Dr. Anderson, you want to add anything?
Well, I appreciate the question and that fidelity implementation certainly matters and it's not an easy thing. I mean, just what's represented in this case study of a school improvement plan, that's a lot to monitor and support. So you have to organize your whole system to monitor and support that. And so it's not that people haven't been working hard. We've got a bunch of folks who work super hard. Though the arrow slide that we've been putting up is really the work. And so to the degree that we can get folks aligned to that same degree, you're going to have more even experiences. So one thing you can do, whether you're a board member or a community member is to ask the question of the teacher, hey, my kid's not using their planner. I thought, I understood the planners were going to be a thing. And while I'm going to do my work at home, can you help me understand what, what you're seeing? Because we need that parent partnership. So that's an example of a move you can make. And leading with curiosity, I think is a helpful thing for any educator. So sometimes educators in 2025 and maybe throughout all of history feel like folks are leading with condemnation, like you're doing it wrong. Chair White, you're doing it wrong. Instead, help me understand why you chose to take the recess when you, when you took it. There's a difference there. Educators want to be partners with families. They, they want to have that connection. They love the partnership with families. And when the kid or our young learners experience a consistent type of approach at home to the one that's in the classroom, that's when magic, magical outcomes can happen. So I love the question because, because that's really the approach. And so it's not to say we haven't been working hard or trying to align things, but we are in the move to try to do that alignment work and it's not a press the button thing. In my own experience, continuous improvement in schools, which are constrained by legislation, by limited resources, by expectations that vary differently from every parent of the kids in that person's room, it's a three to five, just continuous improvement to get a whole system aligned takes consistent energy over time, monitoring and supporting the things that are very most important. So that's the move. So I love the question. There's a lot more to say over time, but that's the work, that's the overall approach that we're engaged in. And then we have really a lot of hardworking, talented people in our system. So despite all these barriers, I'm very optimistic about the progress we can make, but it's going to be a process. I love the question though.
I have one more example as well. If you have an elementary student, Minnesota Department of Education has came out with a family toolkit for practices aligned to the science of reading. I know we've gotten a lot of questions about how to support our readers at home and I, I haven't dug totally deep into it. I'm not sure. There, there probably are some other things that could be applicable to middle school students as well, but especially if you're in elementary, go look at that toolkit on Minnesota Department of Education, the extent to which we can all learn about the science of reading. I, it was an important journey for me to go through as a parent as well. I actually was practicing out with my son and he corrected me and said, I thought it was a, an E that was making a long A. And he's like, no, that's an R controlled vowel. So I knew what he was talking about when he said that and he corrected me. So it's really important that everybody understands some of those important concepts of the foundations or the science of reading. And I was pretty impressed with the toolkit that MDE came out. So that's another component. Reading is really something that happens at home and at school and that's something that we can all do together and learn what a CVC word is and why it's important to know what a CVC word is and how to, like what, what phonics is teaching us and how to explain that. Because if we're using the same languages at home that the students are hearing at school and if they, you know, if, if I didn't know what an R controlled vowel was, I don't know, that conversation would have been very confusing. But I was like, yeah, you're right. And I, so I think the extent to which we can continue those conversations at home, that's a really tangible thing that we can work together on.
Just a couple of quick questions. Timing on the dashboard, when will it be live? I know we've been talking about it for about a year, so I'm just curious when we'll get to see it on our website.
I mean, these are the main components of it.
Going to be on the website though?
Yes.
We'll push that up. And I know Aubrey is putting fonts, color schemes and all that to make it PLSAS, but we'll be ready to upload kind of the similar visuals, what you see, that will then get posted up on the academic website.
Yeah, so I have a shared document with communications. So it's at the point where we're trying to translate the work that was done into something that's website ready. You can, I don't know if you noticed, but the color scheme is now aligned with You can, I don't know if you noticed, but the color scheme is now aligned with, Christie helped to reformat some of those components. I am working with Aubrey to change that there's the by the numbers that I previewed for you last spring. I'm working with them to align to our color guide and all of those. There's not
Branding.
The branding. We don't have enough colors to put all the colors on the chart, so they need to create some that go with. So I believe this is in the later part of the agenda, but I believe the superintendent has it in his goals for November. So I imagine it would actually be before that, but we're working through all those branding components at this time.
Okay. No, I appreciate all your hard work. The other question, I have two other questions. I'll try to make a brief. Regarding the behavior and number incidents, I think it might be helpful, sort of a data person here. And so I've gone into MDE and I've seen the different bullet points of behaviors and different classifications and over time. I don't know if you're looking at that as a total number of behavior incidents or perhaps you could add some more information there as far as what does it mean? Because I think behavior incidents to one person is totally different than, I mean, it's different classifications of incidents as well.
Yeah, so a similar process is happening with behavior where the codes are getting.
Right.
I've worked with the deans at all the sites to clean up those codes. I'm also transitioning to Aubrey, which is brand new and working through some transition issues in terms of, I'm just wanting to make 100% sure that I understand exactly what's being reported. So I do have more granular information on attendance and behavior. Behavior is a very complicated metric because, and I've said this before, it's a combination of what the student does and what the adult does to react to that behavior. So it doesn't only tell us about one or the other. It tells us this kind of confusing combination of both. So a behavior to me might be different than a behavior to Dr. Anderson. We may categorize it differently. I may count it as, I may refer a student for something that he wouldn't refer a student for. So it's, so as you see the more detailed information, as I make sure that everything is the way that it should be reporting in Aubrey, just knowing that the behavior is a very complicated metric and having a behavior rate go up or down doesn't inherently mean something is good or bad. Or having, you know, a behavior, reported behavior decreased does not mean that our behaviors are decreasing. So just wanted to preview that. I am working through all of the data transitions into a brand new system.
I think it just might be helpful to say these are tier three or tier one or two two or something like that. So that, from a, you know, from helping.
Yeah, I can, when I'm ready for that, I can walk you through the different ways in which behaviors are coded and what they mean. There are different levels of behaviors and certain that get, certain ones that get reported to the state for specific purposes. So I can dive deep into that when I'm ready. I'm just not there yet.
I loved what Director Mason asked, and part of my question goes back to, like, are we doing anything with behavior? Like, are there any changes in policies or like, can we bring anything forth that helps support changes in our district that create a more positive learning environment in regard to behavior? And, you know, we could probably circle back on that because that's a big hot topic. The other thing, when I think about like the use of planners, I was just talking to a colleague of mine who lives in a different state and was talking about all the homework that his students receive. And I think a consistent feedback here from parents is my kids never get homework. We used to get homework, we don't get homework. So is that something that, like, making a change to now we're going to have 20 minutes of reading at night or we're going to work on our core math facts or, like, I would also love to hear some more, like, what are we doing from a change that is going to have, like, doesn't cost any money from a resources standpoint, but perhaps a change in our learning model that will have a positive impact on our students' academic outcome?
Well, I'm not familiar with any particular strategy related to homework, but it's something that we can look into over time as an example of something. Yeah. So thank you for bringing that up.
I also know that the research on homework is nuanced and mixed. There are certain situations where homework can help and there are certain situations where homework can actually do the opposite. So I don't think it's, it's more nuanced than a policy that says we need to do 20 minutes of homework. That would not be indicated as a across the board change in practice or policy that would inherently make any sort of positive difference.
I appreciate that, but I think if we go back to the way we were doing things back in 2016, 17, we did have homework where we were learning some foundational things. So it's, you know, looking at things differently and being positive solutions for is all really that I'm looking for, I'm asking for, so.
Charles?
You mentioned as far as curriculum, right? And we are clearly testing an abundance of curriculum, right? That curriculum, oh, too overtesting and not having it supplemented. Is that correctly kind of like what you said?
I think that if I'm recalling, if I'm understanding your question correctly, it is very difficult to supplement and modify curriculum until you have a deep understanding of what it can and can't do. So the the goal initially would be to, especially in a resource that is highly aligned to Minnesota State standards, the goal would be to implement it with fidelity as much as possible. We learn this through various pilot processes. A teacher might say, there's no way this is going to work, but they tried it and they, actually, that did work and I learned something from that. So I think that it's really hard to make strategic changes in a curriculum until you fully understand the way that it works. Like our Bridges curriculum is cyclical. And so the idea that you get introduced to an idea and then you loop back to it a little bit later in the year, you're not going to fully understand that whole process until you've done it for an entire year and then you might modify it or understand it at a deeper level. So yes, there's always, to what Janine was saying earlier, we can always make modifications. We can understand where the gaps are in terms of Minnesota standards alignment, but it's really hard to do that until we have a deep understanding of the resource first.
Right. So with that, what are, what is being done at the higher level to make sure that that is, that it's being done that way, right? Are doing this to 100%?
Yeah, I think that's a complicated question because it's a very time intensive thing to understand. We did, I believe I presented it, we did a study, we randomly entered 100, over 100 classrooms last spring and strategically collected data on implementation to understand what that looks like. We also have information from our observation data through Danielson. But through that implementation study, we learned that there was a difference in implementation between the formal observations and the informal check-ins. And so we know that's an area that, and I think that makes sense. If you know someone's going to come watch you, you're going to do something and, you know, you spend more time preparing than the reality of a day in and day out situation. So one, we'll continue to do those informal check-ins, give feedback to schools about what implementation looks like, identify areas where it's really strong to the extent that we can. This is a resource restriction, but to the extent possible, you release teachers from their classroom to go see a different classroom that does have it implemented at a, at a different level. And then it's really building the capacity of principals. None of the principals, to my knowledge, have ever taught Bridges. That's not, I mean, they're, so it's a learning curve for them as well. So for them to be able to identify what that looks like, that is a learning curve for them as well. So that is something that we're really focusing on is building the capacity of our peer coaches and principals to see that. And our small team that we have here, we, we look at, we do systematic implementation studies to the extent that we are able to do that.
And I think all of that, for sure, we do have a small team. This is the leanest system that I've been in. And one of the ways you accelerate fidelity of implementation is to get, for example, coaches there. So if it's monitored and supported, it's more likely to be implemented with high fidelity. It's not because folks are intentionally trying to, you know, go out into left field. So when we have those rare interfaces with principals, for example, helping them have the skills to monitor and support effective implementation is what we want those built teams to do, principals to do, peer coaches to do. So bring in some attentionality to that in addition to the, to the strategies that Dr. Zambus just outlined. Yeah.
All right. We good?
Dan? Dan?
Mary.
Oh, sorry, Mary. I don't see you, so I couldn't, couldn't see through the screen. Go ahead.
First of all, I appreciate this discussion and I like the fact, Director Zambus, that you brought up particularly what Principal Kabushak is trying to do with the middle schools with creating consistency between them. My concern in, in a lot of this is fairly general. As we're creating the consistencies and creating hopefully efficiencies and making things better for the educators and we're taking all of these initiatives, you know, as class sizes are becoming more diverse and complicated and sometimes large, I'm worried that we do too much at once and we boil the ocean. We're actually going to be detracting from the educator's ability to create those meaningful relationships with the parents of the students and also spend enough time with the students as we're developing these curriculums and going through all this. And I'm hoping that all these changes that are being introduced are being prioritized so we do, in my opinion, a few things very well instead of trying to boil the ocean. And when we're throwing all these initiatives at once and creating these dashboards, et cetera, it's, it's, it's kind of hard for people who aren't doing the work of the educators to kind of realize what they need to go through in order to experience this change and still be able to do the best job possible for the students and for the families. So I guess I'm, I'm just kind of asking for priorities in that so that they can do what they do best. We've had other years, particularly earlier in the, you know, it was brought up by, actually, 26, 2017, where so many initiatives were brought up, so many committees were formed and so many new curriculums were being discussed that it turned out that the teachers weren't able to actually spend the quality time that they needed to with each student and also be able to return parent phone calls and et cetera because of the workload put on them. So I just want to know that we are prioritizing this and not trying to boil the ocean.
Yeah, I appreciate that point. I think prioritization is the name of the game for sure. There, as previously stated, there is a lot. There's a lot from the state. There's a lot that our, our local community is hoping from us. And there's a lot that we're trying to do as we try to do continuous improvement work. So I think it's, it's a fair point to note that and prioritization is a super important part of this. And it's part of what we're trying to use our scarce interfaces with principals to, to do that work, too, to say, let's prioritize and try to do that in an effective manner. So it's noted. Thank you.
All right. There's nothing else? Thank you, Janine. And we will move on to the elementary boundary discussion.
Do you want to use that?
I think this one will work good. Do you want to start from the beginning?
Let's just start from the beginning. Good evening. Tonight, we want to bring everyone up to date on our enrollment boundaries, school boundary discussion. We're starting from the beginning of the presentation, but I'm going to fly through a few of these real quick. Basically, the why, right? We talked about this before. For those who might be tuning in for the first time, the why behind this is adjusting elementary attendance boundaries to reflect board approved site consolidation decisions. And the slide here has more specifics as people can read through that. What we won't do are listed here on the next slide. As nothing's changed from the last presentation we've had, this is just a recap basically of this information. Here's what we're looking to do, the desired results, what we are keeping as goals as we move forward through this process. So we wanted to make sure that those were presented again for people to know that this is kind of our base. Next slide is about the boundary change process. So slide hasn't changed. Where we are on this slide has, right? So now we're past the minimal criteria. We are looking at that feedback opportunity from our Board of Education committees. And also we have options that we are sharing with those teams so that we can then also present that with our learning leaders. And, and it would be October, according to the time slide or timeline slide, if you want to go to that one. October 27th is when we would then be bringing forward two options to the, to present to the board and recommendation for the board to take action on the new boundaries for elementary schools, November 10th. So that is in a nutshell where we've been. The assumptions we're using are here. This is kind of the basis of what we needed to make sure we understood what's happening as we began the process. We haven't changed that, just making sure people are aware of it here. I won't rehash this necessarily, but I will move on to the minimal criteria, which is we are making sure that each of these scenarios that we bring forward meet these criteria as a minimum, focusing on the data and gathering feedback on additional possible data points. That's kind of where we're at right now to be measured in finalizing our recommendation to the school board. And Dan's going to take it from here to talk about the work that's been accomplished and where we're at with our actual scenarios.
So when we're looking at all of these different options, there are certain assumptions that we have to have so that everyone can be on the same page when we're creating these. First assumption, when I'm looking at those numbers, the Lola Delago students are pulled out because they're coming from all over the district. We're not going to include them in the rebound ring. It wouldn't make any sense. We're also pulling out all of the open enrolled students because they're going to have to go through the enrollment process again. I mean, they're already in our district, but their preferences of which location they're going to want to go at may change. So that part of those, all those students are pulled out of this base data that we're looking at. IDTs are being pulled up back to their home schools. There again, they may be choosing those as their primary school. That might be where they wanted to be all along. So as we're looking at these base numbers, those are the assumptions that we absolutely start with for every one of these scenarios. Once the boundary discussions have been completed, then we will go back and make sure and include all these IDTs to get them their preference, their reply for their preferences and then start that open enrollment process again so that they can pick their choices. And then the regular enrollment, all of that's going to be at the same time. So the enrollment office is going to be exceptionally busy for a couple of months. Now, as we're looking at, we provided a bunch of the basic raw data in here. I did not put any maps in here and I did that kind of on purpose. We're really going to be presenting a lot of that stuff to our committee so that they get all that stuff thrown at them and then they can see those, how those maps change for each one of those options. I did toss in a little bit of the information in here as we talked about, I mean, I was getting pretty crazy with some of the names I had. So it's now scenario A through E, much easier, people can really understand it. But when we're looking at those things, this, this description isn't going to mean necessarily much to anyone here right now. When they look at the map, they're going to be like, oh, yeah, that makes sense. But there again, I just wanted to provide some of that basic raw data that we're looking at. When we're looking at these, the numbers, the number of students impacted, some scenario may be a lot less students impacted, but there may be other things that are impacted greatly like bus drive times. So as Director Ryder mentioned earlier, we will be meeting with both the Finance and Operations Committee tomorrow. And then later on this week, we are meeting with the bus company to go over those options to see, okay, are these things that are going to potentially reduce our costs, less busing? Or are they looking at increased driving? Or are they looking at increased drive times if we pick a different option? So we want to make sure and get all of that information from them as well, so that when we go back to analyze all of these scenarios, we have the, at least as much data as we can come up with. But you can see, we've, we're looking at everything from the percentage of non-white students, English learners, frame reduced, special ed. We've got the total capacity available in these locations, and then we've got the total enrollment by location, so you can kind of see how full a school would be. Scenario A is a good one to show that it only impacts 437 students, but we've got one school that's over 80% capacity, and the other school with the low side is at 52%. That is about as unbalanced as you can be when you're looking at that. So all of those types of things, we're going to make sure that we're looking at and sharing with everybody.
It was mentioned to me, the fact that as you look at the students impacted, we are not including in these numbers any IDTs and district transfers or any open enrollment considerations there. This is just simply our resident students that we're referring to on these counts. And, and so, consider the fact that some of these capacities are going to be impacted by those decisions then after the fact, too. So, you know, there could be a possibility for things that might look more distanced from percentage-wise, right? But those two sites might actually come closer together by the time everything is said and done, after the IDTs and the open enrollments.
Can I ask a question to that? Do you mind?
Oh, right ahead.
Just, that was my question. So, is it oversimplistic to say, so like, say you take scenario A, for example, and you look at, what is it, Glendale, for example, is, would be at 52% capacity in this, in this particular scenario, again, using this as just an example. But since IDT and open enrollment is pulled out, is it oversimplistic to say those students would very likely be put at Glendale because of the capacity issue? Or is that, there's so many other factors, right, to put into that?
We have to look at parent preference. It's going to be, that's going to be a big chunk of it. You know, where do these parents really want to have their students at? They may not pick Glendale. You know, we may get to the point where we fill up a school or get another one at higher capacity, and Glendale might be their second or third option at that point. So, it's not oversimplistic, but it's just something that we can't look at or consider at this point.
Right, okay.
Which is one of the reasons that, in a lot of these scenarios, my goal was always to aim for a more balanced approach, so that we can look at that a little bit more holistically. You know, when they're adding in, there may be one school that's everyone's second choice. But it may also fit into where everyone that was open enrolled gets their first choice. You know, we really can't know, and we can't design any of these systems that way. So we'll look at balancing the best we can, coming up with that recommendation we think works best for the district, and then open it up and let the community decide where they would most like to go. You know, it's, we can't design a system based on what ifs, I guess. That's the best way to look at it.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for letting me interrupt there.
No worries.
I, I had a question with that, too. Could I ask that now?
For sure.
Or do you want me to wait?
No, ask it anytime.
We also have land for sale that's zoned, some mixed zones, some residential, et cetera, you know, that, we don't want to go through changing boundaries, but if that land were to, were to be developed and more residential housing options, particularly low income, were to move into some of those areas, that could also change the demographics as well as the percentage of some of these schools. Is that taken into consideration when you develop these scenarios?
So that is, that's a good question. So, we did approach the city, and I've mentioned this to a lot of different groups. We talked with the city of Prior Lake, we talked with the city of Savage, to find out where the growth areas are. There are a couple of these scenarios that worked particularly well with any potential growth. I'm, I'm not going to pick anyone in, in particular right now. I could show you by maps where every one of those locations are. And as you're looking at, some of these scenarios work better for that, and that was one of the things we were looking at. Where is that potential growth? When you're talking to the city of Savage, though, they aren't expecting more than 50 new housing starts a year. That's not very many. And we would get 0.7 kids per housing start. So when you're looking at changes that happen, it's not going to happen quickly. I suspect, I mean, this is my hope, is that once this boundary adjustment is made, that we could be good for 10 years. That's my hope. There's a couple of scenarios in there that are very, very flexible for the potential growth that we could see. Now, if we were to suddenly see every one of those locations max out in the next couple of years, that could be a different story. I mean, that could be 1,000 new starts. I don't expect to see that. Not once, even the city of Prior Lake is looking at less than 75 new housing starts a year. So between the two of them, with our potential housing, I mean, decline in enrollment, combining those two things, I mean, is there a happy medium in there? I would love to see that. I don't expect it, but all of these plans, we'll take that into account, and we'll, that's how we're going to help rank them. And that's part of the reason we wanted to come up and talk with all of the Board, as well as with our committee in the morning. I may be missing something that is really critically important to everybody, and that we would love to find out, so that we can evaluate these options better, or I come up with a completely different option, because none of these are fitting into that priority or that one particular 10 different things that people see. And I want to make sure that people are seeing at least some of the stuff that we're looking at, so that they can bring those other things forward to us. I can scroll through a few of these other scenarios, just so you can see some of the other things. One of the ones that, we've got the last two scenarios affect the most amount of kids, but one of the things that I really kind of like it, is that they're about as balanced as I can possibly make them for student enrollment. And that, something like scenario E, well, D, E, there's a couple of them in there that really are, I'm trying to future-proof them a little bit better, you know, looking five, 10 years down the road. And I think that we've got some of those scenarios that really do that well.
One other note is, we did not put in all the different grade levels. We have that data, but we, you know, shortened this up so you could see it better. But what we did do is, we took a look at all of those numbers by grade level, the highest numbers, for example, divided by four, is it within our, our range? That's acceptable. And that was the case for all of these scenarios. So just know that that's the case right now. I think that there's some buildings, of course, that won't be able to do more than four classrooms, right, per grade, but there might be a couple, that that might be a possibility, should it be necessary as well.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that in the final analysis, that we're looking at every grade in every location, to make sure that we can fit in for that capacity. But then also, when we open up the enrollment, that will be one of those things that is going to have to be a criteria. We're going to, the, we'll open it up until we hit that point where we're full with either four sections per kindergarten or five sections for a couple of other grades, and when we hit that point, that's it. Then they'll have to pick their second and third options. That's absolutely no different than has been done previously for any of these things. So that's just, it's, it's just a part of the process when we have the open enrollments. Any other questions?
Is, forgive me if you said this, I think you touched on it a little bit. When you're looking at the different scenarios and the different columns, you know, free and reduced, things like that, are you, in terms of like busing, for example, so like, in this scenario, you know, these particular students would be on the bus for 40 minutes, you know, to and from, or five minutes, do you know what I mean? And maybe-
That's an awesome question.
Maybe that's not there yet? Yeah.
It, it, that is a part of one of the, so that's one of the criteria that we are putting in there, and when we talk to the bus company, we're going to find out.
Okay, that's, that's what you said. You're going to talk to the bus.
No, that's an awesome question.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, Lisa.
Oh, sorry, I have a question. When I look at like scenario A, and that obviously has the less impact on our district students, students, about 94 students, would we ever, I don't even know if this is possible, so maybe I'm asking a question for our, for Dr. Thomas or someone, but would we, would we ever, as a board, look, and so we'll, we'll say like, okay, we place our, our district students within, you know, this is our boundaries, Five Hawks is at 82% capacity, we're going to close open enrollment for that one particular school. Do we ever do that, where we, I mean, I'm just asking?
Yeah, we have in the past.
We have. For specific schools.
And, and even currently, it might even be specific grades within a school, too. So, yeah, that is, that is a practice that we have.
Okay, so maybe not to scare, you know, to, I mean, I understand the balance, and I get that, but keeping that in mind, because I think that scenario does actually have the least amount of impact on our in-district students, so.
Does, and it's got the worst busing situation.
No, that's okay, and that's good to know.
Yeah, and that's one of the things that I'll be, and that's, and I wanted to show that, too. That's a perfect example of something that is awesome in one regard.
Mm-hmm. I'm sure there's lots of different variables.
Really not good in another regard. So as we look forward with all of those types of, and that's what I want to hear, is I want to hear that feedback to, so we can look at these things from different viewpoints.
Thank you.
Jessica.
Yeah, I, I mean, on that note, could we maybe in future decks potentially see like our pros and cons? I know there will be a lot of questions coming up tomorrow morning, but also, but, you know, that would be helpful to see it as output of why we didn't choose things or why we're recommending.
There's going to be an analysis on each one of these.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think I shared that with the committee, my initial analysis part. So we'll go through that tomorrow, and we'll increase on that, so that when we get down to selecting these, we're going to have a lot of pros and cons, a lot of different analysis for all of those options.
Yep.
Yeah.
Just a comment, too, which is, for everyone's sake, I think there was some really great questions asked at the last Finance and Operations Committee, so it was very helpful.
Charles.
Once it does come back to us, and you've narrowed this down, are you going to be providing us everything? Maps, like, so you, so you didn't provide maps now? Get that, completely understand, right? Are you going to provide us the maps in advance, plus, and/or, should we just, like, I would love to see the full-on breakout all the way down into classrooms, right? That might just be me, right?
No, the plan is definitely to bring down, to bring everything in for the breakdown and everything else, bringing in the maps. The detail level of maps, that depends. I mean, I could get a blown-up sheet. What I see on the computer is very different than what I can show you in a JPEG, because it's just the detail level just overwhelms the picture.
Nope, so, let me clarify. Just basically, the information that you are bringing towards, into the committee, right? And all of that information, just bringing it into the-
Appreciate it. That's exactly the next, the next board meeting is exactly what we're going to do.
That's all, that's all I was, yeah, just trying to, to make sure.
And then, I would just close, chair, with this. The next phase in this, obviously, we're going to work through this process to get to the recommendation that we'll eventually bring to the Board, but simultaneously, we are also starting that initial phase of looking at the DSC and the, for lack of a better term than calling it, the Educational Services Center, where we'll be reoccupying a space of central services support, community ed support, as well as special ed and our transitions program, all being under one roof. So that information will start to kind of build some capacity of that process, kind of as this is coming to a close. That will be ramping up, so I just want to foreshadow with all of you, similar process of building maps and spacers, usage, things of, that we're considering and building up our assumptions, all of that is starting to happen now as well. Obviously, with the sale of, of this building, but that's something else that we'll be bringing to the committee and then coming back with you with some different scenarios of how we would occupy that space with programs and central services.
All right, great, thank you. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and then the last on our agenda is draft goals for the superintendent for 25, 26. Michael.
Yeah, thank you all. So what you have here this evening are the draft goals for 25, 26. This is kind of in the, it's in the MSBA format, so what I've done is aligned it to the strategic priority. So you'll see in our, in the first one, I've taken the strategic plan alignment for academic excellence, as well as positive learning environments. Positive learning environments isn't a standalone, it's kind of woven in between this one and the last goal, but there's three kind of big areas that I'll be focusing in on. Obviously, teaching and learning is, you know, our bread and butter, it's always going to be an area of focus, and so you'll see the format, I won't read through everything here, but you'll see the format of the strat plan, the MSBA standard that's required, the elements that are aligning to that MSBA standard, and then SMART goals, and then progress indicators, as well as examples of evidence that may be pulled from, and then the rubric that you all are familiar with as well, that will be at the, at the very end, but I just put that out there so you can see that. And then, second area is MSBA standard, school district finances, and then same process, and then the third is around communication and community relationships. Some of this you'll see intertwined in partnering with you all as Board, also picking up on some of the goals that you had set for yourselves, particularly at the last portion of communication and community partnerships, and ways that we, as an administration team and a governance team, can tighten up those bonds. And so there are some aspects there that I would be looking to facilitate those, those connections between the Board and administration, as well as joining on some of those rounding sessions as well, because I know you all are now going to be assigned to schools, that might be a joint activity, so that we're working in tandem with one another. So, so that's, that's what I'm proposing. Open it up to you, Chair, Board, for any feedback.
You want to have, Jessica?
Yeah, I had a few things. So I guess under the first one, under progress indicators, which are essentially deliverables, right?
Are you on the first?
The first goal.
Yeah, the first goal.
Why do we not have one included for reading proficiency rates in addition to math? Is there-
Because we have not done anything different in terms of our reading resource holistically. We're now in the year three of the math, and so that's why we should be able to start seeing evidence of that. We wouldn't have evidence at this stage in, in the game.
Okay.
But again, every building is going to have its reading and math goals, so that's part of that first deliverable, is that we have that built in, so that, because they're going to see different nuances at their building level before we would see it at the aggregate level as a district as a whole.
Great.
So that's why I've included both.
Okay. And then, at one point, we had talked about a goal to have, like, a curriculum listing, we talked about it not being an add-it, but just like a listing of curriculum by grade and like links and things to it.
Mapping.
Mapping, thank you.
And so, the four core is kind of an area, I actually don't have a list here, but as, it's actually one of the things that I'm doing this year. I can certainly add it, I think, here for, as a deliverable, and really looking at math and reading, obviously, but then just focusing on the four core.
Yeah.
Science and social studies, then, of what's kind of, what resources do we currently have, and then starting with those, because that's going to be the, the, kind of the biggest pillars.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I would love to see it added, I don't know if others, but, and then, under the second goal.
Can, do you mind if we maybe just go goal by goal?
Yeah, sure.
And just any other feedback in that way, and we can track better? Okay, I could track better.
Yes.
Anyone else?
I'm happy to go, unless you want to go in order. I'm Amy. Okay. A couple different things, one of my questions was reading as well, so thank you for answering that. Oh, my mic is on, okay. For the curricular alignment, does that also include, like, putting it on the website, so we have transparency? So it'd be like curricular alignment and transparency?
So the curricular mapping would be something that we can upload, similar to what we started to do with the elementary. Yep.
Okay. And then, you know, one thing that, so, I like the, you know, elementary proficiency goal, would love to see sort of like what a stretch goal is there, knowing that, you know, I understand it takes time to move the needle, but, so, my feedback was there is, you know, is two points enough to really move the needle for kids within the next three to five years? But also, there's, there's one other thing that is concerning to me, is, and I was just looking at other goals from other different superintendents, there's not a lot of them posted, because we're doing them all at the same time, to be honest with you, but I loved one that I saw about documented plans for students below benchmark, because those are really the students that, you know, were, are really, the ones that are struggling, is those ones that are below benchmark. So it was basically creating, and this would maybe go into the school improvement plan, but creating a documented plan for students below benchmark. I don't know if that's possible, but I love the idea of having a specific plan for these students who are below benchmark.
Yeah, Director Atkinson, that, that is actually something that we are looking at with regards to some additional support through our ANI work. at with regards to some additional support through our A&amp;I work. So I think I could, um, have an artifact there, um, with the three success, success coaches that we're going to be, um, bringing on, and their sole purpose is to look at students that are, um, statistically, um, in that gap analysis and that are below benchmark. So I think that would be the cadre that we would be looking at, and then I would present our findings from their work and efforts. So I think that would be something easily captured there.
Okay. And then the last thing is, um, our graduation rate took a little bit of a dip last year, so I know you were diving into that, but I don't know if there's any sort of goal setting around getting that graduation, addressing the graduation rate.
Um, we, we did talk about that. Um, our rate actually stayed consistent. What has gone up is the extended time that many of our students in special ed are taking.
Oh, okay.
So our rate, I mean, that was, we did the analysis and shared that analysis already, both at the staff welcome back, as well as at one of our most recent board meetings as well. So, so yeah, that, the, the rate has remained fairly consistent. What we're seeing more so is some of our students receiving special ed support, they need longer time to graduate, and that's the aggregate that brought the average down.
That's the aggregate that brought the gra, okay. All right. So that's the only feedback I had in that.
Charles.
Um, the only thing for me is, you, and you kind of already hit it, so I just want to echo it. With the A&amp;I restructure, um, something, I think it fits really well with that.
Yep.
I think, you know, we've talked a lot about that.
Yep.
And I think it definitely deserves something to be on there, and how we're going to move that process, process forward.
I've got that noted. I think that's a two-for-one there.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Love it.
Got it.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Jessica took mine, so, Jess?
Um, I just, um, in, actually, along with that, um, I'm not, I would love to see more, um, equity put into the goals. That's across the board.
Okay, I've got that noted to review and how that can be woven in.
I'm just curious, do, do you have, uh, like, a specific example just for context?
Well, I mean, that's, you know, we don't have a resolution anymore, um, but, you know, the, you know, one of the, I guess, promises of redoing A&amp;I and things like that is to, and along with other elements of our district, is, and, and this isn't every, every one thing, not just the superintendent, um, but just to put, you know, keep equity at, you know, as a consideration, and so if I'm looking at, this is just an example, I, because these are your goals, and I want you to, to, um, take that, but just, you know, if we're looking at, you know, looking at our curricular resources, you know, having an equity lens on things that we choose, things that we consider, things like that, and I don't know if that, you know, you may argue, too, that maybe that's not part of your goals necessarily, but I know that was one of the promises, um, of, you know, redoing the A&amp;I plan, so I just want to make sure that's considered.
I just want to be, sorry, I just want to be clear. We'll be redoing the A&amp;I plan, um, for adoption for the next three years this year. We just, um, reorganized a role, so the plan stays as it was, and then we'll rewrite the, the new plan going forward, but I hear your point and can see how, you know, we could incorporate, or I could incorporate some of that more intentional, and then callouts in my goals, um, just so that it's front and center, and folks understand that.
Thank you.
You as a board.
If I could just comment, just, um, to piggyback, and please, Dr. Thomas, if I'm, if I'm getting any of this wrong, but the resolution not being, um, the equity resolution being rescinded or sunsetted, that doesn't, hasn't impacted your stance on equity in giving students and teachers exactly what they need to be successful.
Correct, that, that was not, my goals weren't tied to your resolution.
Correct.
And I would just elaborate on that, um, Director Bullion, have, giving every student what they succeed to be successful, um, is, there, a lot of that is already implied within these goals. Like, we talked about, um, you know, elementary proficiency, we're not singling kids out, we're going to give every student what they need to succeed to, to, to advance that level for all students. So I, I see that sort of embedded within here as well, already.
Good on number one.
Yep.
Yep.
This will be, um, school district finances.
Guess we can start with you, Jessica?
Um, yeah, I mean, I guess my initial thought was something around, uh, balanced budget and delivering under budget, um, especially given updates today. Um, if we could add something like that under progress indicators, um, I don't know how you want to word that, but, um, just to present a, a balanced budget and ensure, you know, whether we put like a SMART goal where it's a percentage under, whatever, whatever you feel is appropriate, but, um, I think that was the main thing, yeah.
Well, the, on the balance, can you say that again? Because I, I didn't hear it. Can you?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think one of the, the main goal around district finances, right, is to try to achieve our forecast or under it, right?
Right.
Um, so, so that we're not dipping into fund balance again, so how do we set a goal around that? I'll let you word it like measurable.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll word it aligned to the policy where it says strive for, you know, eight percent, and I'll have strive for a balanced budget, you know, I'll mimic that same policy language.
Right, okay, perfect.
I think that, you know, just, it just brings a question to mind, given our, our reality, and is, this isn't a, this isn't a question that can be answered here. It, I don't think, but, like, I unders, I, I totally agree, like, how, how do we have, get where we have this balanced budget? And, um, given the, all the factors, um, legislatively, and it's, I, I think back to just even the, um, graph that has been shared since before the, um, the levy discussion.
Yeah, so.
I mean, we are just seeing that, you know, without passing a levy, with things not changing, us having a balanced budget, us, I mean, the, the proj, the trajectory was mapped, like, with nothing changing, with nothing changing as far as revenue sources, I mean, the projection of statutory operating debt is looming, you know, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
I mean, sorry, but I, I don't necessarily agree with that. Like, I think that we, uh, may, as a board, made millions of dollars worth of cuts to set a balanced budget. The expectation is that the SI is achieving that as a goal, I would think, right? I mean, I understand there are constraints, and we're making tough decisions, and, but we have to live within our means, we, we don't have a choice. Um, and we set a balanced budget, right, or we set the budget, so the expectation would be to achieve that or make changes so that we can achieve that.
And I, I think, and I hear you, um, I think my, um, the consideration, I think that needs to be a part of the discussion is, um, making cuts to balance the budget cuts into the very fabric of the resource we, we need to get, then get the outcomes. So, so doing that with, you know, in isolation, um, without having revenue conversation, that's where it gets challenging, because then the very first goal of the delivering, it takes resources to do that, you know? Great accomplishments don't happen for free. And I'm not saying that, you know, it, that nothing will happen, but I'm just being mindful of the expectations to deliver outcomes and the five, seven million dollar cuts every year that we'll be taking without any revenue adjustment. So that's, that's just a factor that I'm.
But just so I understand this, I mean, we set the budget for this year based on our revenue projection and our expenses and enrollment and all the factors. Like, this is, this year's goal, so I think that we set a budget based on all the cuts that we made, that we feel is achievable, so then the expectation would be that we're working towards achieving that this year, right? Understanding.
Sure, no, I, I, I'm not disagreeing with that.
Right, I, I mean, I think that should be a, an annual goal, really, and that we're setting a budget that we, we think we can achieve.
Well, and I would just say, so I think, one, I had the same type of thought, but I, where I put it, where I thought it made, made the most sense for me is under the very first bullet point, where it says, "Present a five-year financial forecast and roadmap to the BOE by December 2025," and I had a comma, comma, "by maintaining a fund balance within policy." So if we're looking at a projection, and I understand that it's just a projection, but if we're building our budget out with a three- to five-year forecast, and we're building that budget out so that we are within fund balance policy, then we should be okay, because we always know that we're going to have that money in the savings account to account for things that are unpredictable, you know what I mean? So for me, I, I felt comfortable with that. And then the other thing that I've, I would feel comfortable with, in order to ensure that we are staying on budget, if you go down to bullet point three, um, "Maintain a district budget aligned to the BOE financial priorities, verified through an annual audit, but also through month, monthly monitoring." So we're not only just doing it through the annual audit, but we're doing it through monthly monitoring.
Yeah, and that's what I have down in examples of evidence, the monthly financial reports, so I've got that captioned.
So I, well, I just thought it was a little bit more clear to have it written in there.
And actually, I, I, I like what you, where you're going with, with, with that first bullet point.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe, because it's going to be a constant struggle, maybe having that, that fund balance target on here will, will help it keep that in the forefront of our mind.
Yeah.
That, I think, because a lot of the things that, maybe I think you're talking about, Jessica, or Michael can't control, and I want to keep things that are within his control on this list. I mean, if, if revenue falls short because of something that happens in St. Paul, I don't want to have, hold Michael accountable for that. Understand where you're going, but maybe doing what Lisa says here gets to the same place. Because as long as we, like, as long as we have that fund balance in that window, we should be okay.
Yep.
At least year to year.
Yep.
I, I agree with your, with your second bullet point there. Um, how, and this is going to stretch into your number three, but I think there's got to be something specific with just the budget, more than, um, the semi-annual or the two times with, with, um, what am I trying to think about?
Town halls.
The town halls. However, we're getting that out to the community, um, because if we're going to talk about bullet point number two, we've got to do more with just budget, and I think so, it might deserve an additional bullet point just within this section here.
What would that be, Director?
I, I don't, and that's, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, however we can, um, push that out to, like, what, what is going on financially, right? And whether that's in newsletters, right? Ju, just financial something, whether it be in your, your soup.
Yep.
That you do in the magazine, right? More updates financial-wise of what's going on within the district.
Publicly communicating financial updates.
Yes. More often than what, than what we're actually doing. I, I know I'm just spitballing here.
I got it. Well, if I have questions, I'll circle back to you, but I've got the note taken to kind of process through on that for some edits.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Director Olsted, anything?
Yeah, I'm, I'm struggling still with the first bullet. I don't, I don't think that, for this year's goals, I don't think we should tie a goal to a forecast, especially five years, considering what Dr. Ryder said earlier this evening about how going in just three years is not ideal or realistic sometimes, given any potential scenario. So I'm struggling with tying a goal to something that isn't.
Well, I heard, I heard two things, and, and maybe I'll just reflect back. So there's like a three-year financial forecast, which is a presumptive model, okay? Based upon assumptions, fixed costs, projections, and if our, you know, if we strive to have our fund balance in that eight percent range, then that's what we use as our reserve, that we got to build as a constant. So that's, that's the one goal, okay? So that we kind of know where, what's the, where's this train possibly going? The other goal, um, can I, as I heard it was, given what, where we're at right now, how do we, how do we get to, how do we strive for that balanced budget with some of the factors for just this fiscal year, given the realities that are with us? We know that we've got two things that make up a big swing right now. Are there controls that we can put into place? Are there going to be cuts that we're going to have to experience, or are there going to be other types of freezes of, of positions, you know, et cetera, that we'll have to rectify to manage through just this fiscal year? Did, am I saying that correctly from what you all were saying on the two bullets?
I would say with the forecast, I'm sorry, I would say with the forecast, that the first bullet point is just presenting a forecast, like we've done in the past.
Right, right.
But what I was saying is that as you build that forecast, that forecast should keep in mind that we are maintaining a fund balance.
Uh, uh, understa, so I, I.
Within that forecast, that was what my whole intent of, that was.
Yeah.
So it's the practice of, because there was a years, a couple, the first couple of years, I was, I think it was the first year on the board, we didn't do a three, three to five-year forecast, so, um, anyway, it helps us to roadmap where we're going.
Just a question on that, because I may be misunderstood when you're saying that. Like, I think when we said, like, by maintaining a fund balance, I took that as for this annual financial period. Certainly, the forecast that we're producing, whether it's five years or however long, um, is kind of a separate ask, I guess.
Right, that's why I had two different bullets.
Okay.
Two different things, but I wanted to clarify how I was talking about the part that I talked about, because I think it was different than what you were saying, Jessica Olsted. What you, I, what I heard you say, Director Olsted, was that we are committing to a three-to-five year goal, and that's not what it is, it's really just presenting the plan.
Right.
Yeah.
And I, I think I agree with you, like, maybe it's not fully accurate, but I do think it's something we kind of have to have in place, especially if we're looking towards a referendum, or that, you know, like, how do you know what to ask for if we have nothing planned? I don't know, that's where my mind goes.
Mm-hmm.
Jess, you, okay?
Yeah, I'll get there.
Clear at least?
I'll get there.
Okay.
Clear as mud.
Yeah.
Moving on to number three, then, are we good? Director Mason, anything on number three?
Yeah, I think maybe just a question on the second one around growing district partnerships by securing at least two external collaborations. Um, how, um, I'm trying to understand, like, what the priorities would be around that, or what you would be seeking? Like, are these in specific, again, to make a specific goal, are these in specific areas? So do you want to try to partner with, like, an anti-bullying, or, you know, rock with food, or, like, are there priorities there?
It would be, it would fall within one of the four strategic priorities.
Okay.
So that, that's.
Not at this point, but like.
Yeah, just in one of those, in one of those four, so for example, is, is there, you know, a tutoring agency that's going to come in and do some additional support for our kids that we've not had an established partnership with, you know? Uh, I'll, I'll just say Learning RX, they were at our Fall Fest, okay? So that, that, that's the kind of stuff I'm talking about, that would align, and, and for me, you know, I'm centering a lot of our work on how do we, you know, we've heard quite a bit from Dr. Anderson tonight, you know, being new and taking this first blush, looking at the landscape very, very thin, you know? We look at some districts that have, you know, ten to fifteen interventionists, you know, for reading and math. We, we don't have that capacity, so how do we find partnerships in some of those capacities? So that's where I was focusing, you know, on some new connections. And that was some of the feedback directly from my end-of-the-year eval or review was making more connections with community.
And I appreciate that. I think it's a good goal, I was just looking.
I was just looking for it to be, you know, specific, measurable, like specific to like what areas are we trying to focus on instead of.
For me, academics is my first area that I'm going to be focusing on.
Academic partners. Sorry, I'm trying to read my notes. I think I felt like the other, the fourth one to facilitating dialogue with elected officials, it, it just was sort of in my mind, like how do we measure that? Or what is the expectation of that?
Yeah, and that would be having the reports, is that in this one here?
Not to interrupt, is that something you were talking about, like having broader, broader open engagement sessions?
There's, I would like to have one broader event and that's, let's see, in, yeah, in that, in that bullet right there, I'm looking at trying to have one broader community touch point on kind of the whole educational system in Prior Lake Savage Area community that pulls together stakeholders from policy, from business, you know, community, et cetera. So that's the event that I was looking at doing there. And in that, from there, it's that third bullet of documenting and reporting at least two instances of direct advocacy impact from said dialogues. There's a lot that I engage in, you know, at the state level and national level, but having greater intentionality, bringing that information back, kind of going back to Director Johnson's point earlier, how do I then communicate that back to the broader community to understand, you know, where things are at, kind of like the state of, of our district from some of those engagements that I'm involved with? That's, that's one area that I thought I could tighten up in terms of that reporting back out. Like, it's like going to a PD session or a training and then coming back and then I got great stuff, but am I sharing that, you know?
Yep. I'm sorry, and then the last one, I don't know, I, like establishing two board development sessions, I felt like that should be more like our goal versus yours, but I.
The formal staff meetings?
Sorry, under progress indicators, the first bullet, that's, I went backwards.
Oh, yeah.
Establishing two more development sessions.
So, so what I'm looking at doing there, yes, this does include you, but looking at ways that we can have direct facilitated team building with the executive leadership team and the board. And bringing in a facilitator to help, you know, look at, I think I talked about this in our retreat about leadership styles, understanding one another's approach to how we lead so that we have greater alignment, because the more aligned we are, the greater outcomes we can be to our staff and to our broader community.
Okay.
Yes, you have a secondary benefit as a board to that, but the primary impact is for our team to gel with the board.
And would it, be your intention to have one yet before the end of 25?
Yep.
Okay.
Should we do, should we put one on there instead of two then? Like is two achievable?
Well, it'd be a, kind of like a fall and a spring.
And there would be one new board member.
Yeah, there would be a new board member.
Might be helpful to have one in the spring as well.
With that one, I think if you take out the word, if you just move the word, you're not taking it, but establish two development sessions to strengthen government roles and communication with executive leadership and the board. It doesn't sound like it's a.
Reword that, yeah, gotcha. Yep, I like that.
Do you want to go in? Okay. The only thing I, one, well, two questions. How long is our student contract with? Are we done with using them or?
No, we're using them because you're, you've got board goals now tied to them. But no, we're just only doing it for the stakeholder feedback. We're not doing all the other coaching stuff.
But is our contract up with them?
We're extending the, this, for this year, just the survey piece, not all the other stuff.
Okay, because I, I've heard some really good things about other survey companies. So that's why I didn't know if you were open to looking at like perceptions and there's different companies that are, different boards are using different, I mean, I get, we want to have consistent data, but.
Yeah.
I just didn't know.
So I'm, I'm.
Like, I was more thinking about the, because the contract date, I thought we were done with our contract with them, so that's why I asked. Okay. The last thing is, I think something that was really effective last year is, and this would be you trying to get staff to do this because they, they fall into your leadership is, under the, let's see, one, two, three, four, about facility and dialogue with elected officials. But getting people to advocate up at the legislature for things that are helpful to our district. And I'm thinking about when Patrick Glenn went up and spoke about the non-disclusionary discipline, you know, what, what type of powerful impact that has, having come from a leader in our district up at the legislature. So I don't know how you word that as far as trying to recruit people to do that, because I know it's always hard to get people to go out and up and speak.
Sure. Yeah, and we had, and we had two, like administrators last year. But I, I, you know, I think that could be woven in as an example of evidence. So perhaps getting staff and perhaps even parents, you know, so that could be an, an example of evidence that I could add to that. Or like a legislative voice at the Capitol.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it. And that, that's, that's all I have there.
Charles? Good? Jessica? Good? Amy?
I'm good, thank you.
All right.
Are you good? I got my notes and I'll come back and probably touch base with a couple of you.
Okay.
Before October 13th.
All righty. Then we are done for the evening and made it before 10.
We can keep talking for seven minutes if you'd like.
No, that's, that's not necessary. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.